The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, March 6, 2023. It's 7:04 PM. I will ask you please to stand for the pledge and Mr. Wazarko, if you would please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have a very nice crowd here tonight. So it's wonderful to see all of you and we're going to move right through our agenda. I know you're all here for specific reasons, not because our meetings are so fabulous, but it's nice to see everybody here tonight. Anyway, we do not have any presentations. We do not have a public hearing. I'll ask for approval of the previous meeting minutes, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept the minutes from the February 21st, 2023 regular meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and reports. Do we have anything to report tonight? Okay, right. Moving on to our next item under new business. We have some appointments to make and before we do make the formal motion, I will ask our police chief to please come to the podium and he's going to say a few words about both officers that we're going to be appointing tonight.
Thank you very much for hosting us tonight. You know, as I've been a chief for a little bit over a year and I've had the distinct pleasure to have, you know, a handful of promotional ceremonies and this one is a very special because we have not only a promotion, but we also have an appointment to police officer. What I'd like to do first is I'm going to read a little bit of a bio on both the officer that's being promoted and the officer that is now coming to Plainville. That way the board can then make the appointments. The first is from promotion to Sergeant and that would be Officer Greg Arvi. Greg grew up in Newington, Connecticut, graduated from Eastern Connecticut State University with a bachelor's degree in sociology and criminology. He was hired by the Plainville Police Department in 2006 and he's coming up on his 17th year with the department, his anniversary. So 17 years, very long time, very good career. During that career, he attended the State's Attorney's Legal Training Program, DUI Enforcement Training and Bicycle Patrol Officer School. He attended Methods of Instruction School and held a triple instructor certification for training in the areas of handcuffing, OC, spray, and baton. He's currently one of our drone operators. He has been awarded the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award on five separate occasions. He's also been awarded the department's lifesaving commendation and the Stork Award, which I don't know what that is, but I can make an educated guess. I'm assuming you delivered a child.
Help.
Help deliver a child. Okay. All right, same thing. If you were there, congratulations. He's married to his wife Dale and his two sons are here, Jack and Jason. Got the Jack part right. Now for Anthony Horton, his appointment to police officer in Plainville. Anthony grew up in Detroit, New York area. He attended the State University of New York at Pottstown where he received a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice with a minor in business administration. He graduated from the Connecticut Police Academy in 2017 and was then hired by the Winchester, Connecticut Police Department. While in Winchester, for his first five years there, he attended a Methods of Instruction School and became the department's armorer. He is also a certified emergency medical responder and is a certified field training officer. And best of all, he's a certified officer for the state of Connecticut, which allows us to have him move over to us in a very expeditious process. We are extremely happy to have him join our force. I think he's going to make a great addition to our family here in Plainville. With that being said, I would respectfully request that the council promote to Sergeant Officer Greg Arvi and also appoint to police officer in Plainville, Officer Anthony Horton. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so we're going to take each one of these appointments separately and I will ask for a motion on the first appointment, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to appoint Greg Arvi to the position of Police Sergeant effective March 7, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Congratulations and thank you for hanging in there. Very good, very good.
Congratulations.
Okay, all those in-
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Wazarko.
No, go ahead.
Nope. You sure?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to have you sworn in by our town clerk after we do our other appointment because we do have to take care of that. So just take another minute or two. All right, item number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to appoint Anthony Horton to the position of Police Officer effective March 7, 2023.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Welcome to Plainville. We're excited. Stay well. Okay. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so right now we will, we will go proceed with the swearing in of both the officers and our town clerk, Perini, will do that. And anybody that wants to take a picture. Yeah, if you could just, thank you. Perfect. Have a few words.
I just want to thank Chief Vangeli for this opportunity. I really appreciate it and I look forward to taking on this new position. I want to thank the town council also for this opportunity. And I want to thank Lieutenant Mullins and Lieutenant Quilter having the confidence in me to take on this new position. And Chief Peterson was very helpful for me throughout my entire process. And I just want to thank him also and all my coworkers and colleagues who are here to support me tonight. Thank you very much.
Great. Congratulations.
I would also want to thank my wife and my family. I kind of forgot about them as I'm up here getting a little nervous. So she's put up with me for a while. She, so looking at me sideways right now. So, thank you.
I want to thank the town council for appointing me. Chief Vangeli helping me through the process and, you know, giving me the opportunity to be a Plainville Police Officer. I'm excited to bring my experience to Plainville and, you know, serve the community as well and the town of Plainville for where I live now as well.
Great.
And thank you to my wife for putting up for me for the, the past five years of being a police officer as well. Yeah, I almost did. Yeah, you should have kept whispering to my ear. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Before, we're going to take a little break because you may not want to stay for the rest of our intriguing meeting. However, I would like to say on behalf of the town council, thank you Sergeant for your dedication to the town of Plainville and the Plainville Police Department. Certainly doesn't go unnoticed how, how very difficult the jobs are that all of our police officers do every single day. We truly value you and we're very, very happy that you are now moving up through your, the ranks of your colleagues. So congratulations. And to our new police officer, Anthony, welcome to Plainville. Thank you very much for joining. This is a great group of people. And once again, the job that you're going to do for our community is valued deeply by everybody. And so I do thank you for that and I thank your family because this is a career that not everybody can embark on. And it certainly takes the support of your family, your friends, and your colleagues to do it well. So thanks again. Thank you and congratulations. We're going to take a brief pause. Okay, we're going to resume the rest of our agenda tonight. We have a couple more appointments. So item number three, please, under appointments.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Wonderwood.
Motion to appoint Zachary Parker, 79 Brace Avenue, Bristol, as a probationary firefighter for the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept with the grant the resignation of Sandra Talbot from the Inlands, Wetlands, and Watercourses Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any other motions, appointments, or resignations tonight that are not on our agenda? Okay, we'll move along. Reporter of the town attorney. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Madam Chair. No report this evening.
Okay, thank you for being with us. All right, reporter of the town manager. Michael, your turn.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to lead off with item number one, which is the Connecticut Fast Track East-West Trail Alignment. At the last meeting, Rob Alois from the Capital Region Council of Governments made a presentation on the $6 million, $16 million grant for the east-west trail alignment connecting the city of New Britain and the town of Plainville. And the COG will use federal funding to construct the final gap in the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail in Plainville to construct a new trail connecting Plainville to New Britain to the Fast Track Trail at downtown New Britain Station. And as we reported, they have requested the town of Plainville's support for the construction of the multi-use trail along the east-west Fast Track alignment as identified in the Gap Closure Trail Study and that the town of Plainville acknowledged the need for a maintenance agreement between the town and the state to be developed prior to construction, which will establish agreed-upon maintenance responsibilities that will be assigned to each of the parties. There is an item under new business to approve the resolution that they're requesting for the 2022 Raze Grant to support the east-west trail alignment and maintenance responsibilities. And I don't know if there are any questions on that item.
Nope.
I will move along to item number two, which is the 2022 Grand List. Sarah Carey, the town assessor, has filed the 2022 Grand List and is reporting a 2.19% increase over last year. The net real estate grand list increased $14,868,364 as a result of the improvement to real estate. The net motor vehicle grand list increased $17,231,320 as a result of increase in the value of new and used motor vehicles. And the net personal property grand list increased by $3,901,708 for a total among all three categories of $36,1,392. The year-over-year net gain in tax revenue is 1.1 million. And the top five taxpayers are DT Connecticut Commons, LLC, AmeriCole, HillCon, Menafort Brothers, and CLMP. Sarah Carey is with us tonight. I'd like to introduce Sarah. And I just want to point out that she has some additional information that wasn't in time for the packet but should be at your seats this evening. And she is available to walk you through any of the, any questions you may have with respect to the breakdown of that grand list or those numbers in the grand list. So three major components that I just read through comprise that grand list growth. And it is good news and something that's going to play out in my presentation later as a slide to show you historically what that grand list has been, but a 2% or 2% plus grand list growth is, is good news for the town. So.
It is. That's unusual.
Yeah.
In past years, we haven't had that kind of increase. So comes at the perfect time.
Yeah. And I don't know if Sarah wants to say a few words, but I thought it would be great-
Sure, we'd love to hear from her.
Not to put her on the spot, but it's a new, new face and she's doing some great work for us. And, you know, we're very happy to please. Sarah's also, again, if I could point out, the, she's a new addition, obviously since July and the, and the budget's been adopted. You've seen quite a few new faces, three right here. And there, there are obviously more. But again, it kind of speaks to the issue of personnel costs, salaries in order of, in terms of recruitment and retention. It's, it's a very competitive labor market out there. I'll probably go through that again in my slide, but very fortunate to have a person of Sarah's caliber who actually worked and trained under Anne Marie and in his, you know, has a wealth of knowledge. So we're, we're happy to have you here.
Great.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I am excited to be here working for the town of Plainville. Like Mike said, I did have the pleasure of working under Anne Marie quite some time ago, but she is an amazing predecessor. So I have some big shoes to fill and I'm up for the challenge. I'm very excited for it.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
You certainly started at the right time for us.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure all, it's very busy for the assessor's office throughout the year, but certainly more times than others. And welcome to Plainville. It's really great to meet you. As we go through this, if we have some questions, probably not tonight, but if any of the council members have questions, we can-
Exactly. Just for you to digest. And, and again, it's, it's new information, but, you know, I'll, I'll go through the history in a slide and, and, you know, if there's any future questions, we can, I can check in with Sarah and, and we can get you an answer.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming tonight, Sarah.
Thanks.
Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you all.
Thank you. Next item, number three, is a report of the Plainville Fire Company Hot Air Balloon Festival. And this is really just an opportunity to say that the show goes on, okay? The show is coming back. It's just a more of an FYI in terms of a public announcement and that the council obviously is working to create a, a stronger partnership and to help promote this festival. And it's an opportunity for a, a call for volunteers, if you will, because it's a large undertaking and it needs volunteers. So I make that plea to the public that if you're interested, please contact us, look at the website, look, you know, and give us a call or email us into myself or the assistant town manager, anyone at the fire company. We'd love to have your help for those interested. It is a two-day festival. They're pulling it back a little bit in terms of getting, not getting rid of, but not doing Sunday. So it is Friday, Saturday. You'll see the same, pretty much the same lineup in terms of glow and fire, fireworks and vendors and so forth. It's just trying to bring it back and try to be as efficient as they, as they can. So again, visit the website, give us a call, and we'll have more to say, I'm sure, as we go through the, the budget process and work with them and developing what we hope to be a very sustainable event that we want to not only bring it back, but make sure that we, we do the right things to make sure that this is sustainable. Because obviously it is weather dependent and there's a lot that goes into it. There's a lot of costs involved in, in putting together a event of this size and magnitude. So we're going to need everybody's help and we're all coming together. And I think it's a great thing. I'm very happy Andy and I are on board and we'll do our best to work with the council and bring everything together and make sure that we're as successful as we possibly can be. So.
Great. I'm sure it'll be fabulous.
We hope so. Yeah. I think there's, as you know, council more than I, that you get stopped and, and phone calls and emails about when, you know, when are you bringing it back? When is it coming back? 2023 is it. That's the answer. We're coming back and hope that we'll have a lot of fun doing it.
Great. Thanks for your work with this.
Oh, sure. It's, it's fun. Item four is just a comment on the Assistance of Firefighters grant. And I wanted to let the council know that the FEMA grant solicitation was made at the start of 2023, that the Assistance of Firefighter Grant Program provides funding directly to fire departments for the purpose of protecting the health and safety of the public and first responders' personnel against fire and fire-related hazards. And I wanted to alert you that I've successfully submitted the application for the program and the application is seeking $792,000 in federal funding with a 5% local match of $39,619 for a total of $831,793. And funds are being requested for telecommunications equipment, which is portable radios, mobile radios, repeaters or base stations, if you will, and pagers for the Plainville Fire Department. To my knowledge, Plainville has never received funding under this grant program. The program is highly competitive, but communications equipment has a higher priority and more likely to be funded versus a request for, say, an apparatus of a, of a tanker or a pumper or a ladder truck. So it'll take several months to go through this process and getting past the, the various levels. It's important that, you know, I'll keep track of it to make sure it moves through the peer review cycle and that hopefully we win our way to, to the end, but that the council is aware that there is a 5% local match. And so there is an item under new business to ratify the approval of the submission of the grant application and that the town will commit to providing 5% local match of $39,609.19 if awarded.
Great. I just wanted to also add that the original request for this communications equipment for our fire department was going to be paid through ARPA funding and the, the number tagged was about $800,000. So this is a, this is a big help. If, you know, fingers crossed and all goes well, the $35,000 that the, the $39,000 that the town will be matching will be coming out of ARPA funding. It will not be coming out of our local tax dollars. Is that right? We'll be using ARPA funding for that $39,000.
That would be my recommendation, yeah. In fact, we are successful and that we'll certainly find out and be notified whether or not, you know, we're awarded within the timeframe of using ARPA funds so that we-
Okay.
If necessary, move funds around to, to cover them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Item number five is the Water Pollution Control Facility Drive Assembly. The drive assembly is the remaining part for the grit classifier unit, which is in the process of being rebuilt in-house. The water pollution control facility already purchased a new motor, gear reducer, and lower gear bearing unit. Those three items total $12,803. And the purchase of the final part will bring the rebuilt cost to $47,620. This is a savings of about $50,000 by not bringing in a contractor to do the rebuild. So it's just an effort to try and, and cut costs and do it, do it in-house. The unit is inoperable and has been inoperable for several years, but the superintendent was able to get it up and running, but not properly or efficiently. So a use of this equipment will add to the life of the water pollution control facility pumps by reducing the amount of scouring the impellers get as well as increase the capacity of the SBRs by removing the material. And another small advantage is the reduction of the sludge transported off-site, which further enhances their operation. So there is an item under new business to waive the competitive, competitive procurement process and award bid 2023-21 WPCF Drive Assembly to Lakeside Equipment Corporation, the amount of $34,0817. This is a sole source of proprietary type system. And that's the reason for the request to waive the competitive procurement process. I will pause there. Any, any questions on that?
Okay. Good. Everybody got it?
My other, next item, item six, is GFO, GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Time of year in terms of, of as we embark on our, our budget deliberations, GFOA of the United States and Canada has granted the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the town of Plainville, Connecticut for its annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022. The award represents a significant achievement by the town. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the town had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well a town's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, and an operations guide and a communication device. Congratulations to the finance department and Cal Hauberger on this distinguished award. This is the 23rd consecutive year of recognition for the town. I thought it was just absolutely amazing in, in terms of that quality and consistent quality being recognized for the product that this town turns out for budgets. So again, my hat's off to the finance and for Cal and the work that they've done. So I think it, it deserves recognition this time of year.
Yeah, that's exciting. Please offer Cal our thanks and congratulations.
Absolutely.
That's a big job and, and most important certainly to get that done and to be recognized for those efforts.
Yeah. And I think in, in, in the last point there, in terms of communication device, it is. It's, it's something that the, the public can interact with and, and see. And I think it's a very important piece, a very important resource for the community to have.
Yep.
A, a job well done.
Yep. Thank him again.
I will. Thank you. And I will turn item seven, happenings, over to Andy.
Thank you very much. We do have a few happenings to report on tonight. The first is regard to Bristol Works. Cal Hauberger, the Economic Development Coordinator, and I were invited to tour Bristol Works, which is a new workforce development collaborative opening up in Bristol. It was funded through ARPA dollars that the town of Bristol, or the city of Bristol had received. But this is essentially a training center to provide individuals with skills, certifications, and job placement services to obtain employment quickly or to allow them to advance in their careers. Classes will be offered on a variety of high-demand employment areas, specifically healthcare, manufacturing, IT, and early childhood education. And programs are offered to Bristol residents, but also Plainville residents and residences, residents of local communities. And Plainville residents can join for free. There is a minimal fee associated with books and other, like if there's assessment fees you need to take to receive certification, residents will have to cover those fees. But it's still, I think, a really great program and it's great that Bristol's extending that to Plainville residents. So I think this is a good opportunity for both Plainville businesses and for residents. So I wanted to share that. We have something on our website for it. So if anyone's interested, they could read a little bit more at the Plainville website or you can go directly to bristlworksct.org for more information. The Plainville Police and Fire Departments will be hosting their first annual chili cook-off on Sunday, March 19, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. The event will take place at the VFW Hall at 7 Northwest Drive in Plainville. And tickets can be purchased at the fire station or the police department. All proceeds go to benefit the Plainville Food Pantry. The transfer station on Granger Lane is set to open for the season on Saturday, April 8. The hours of operation will be on Saturdays only from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The transfer station is for town of Plainville residents only and an ID is required. No commercial vehicles or businesses are permitted to dump. There is a fee associated with the disposal of items and residents can refer to the town of Plainville's website. Go to the transfer station ordinance and it lists a fee schedule and a list of accepted items. If you have any questions, please call Public Works Admin- any questions, please call Public Works Administration at 860-793-0221, extension 7176. From the Tax and Revenue Collection Office, delinquent notices for real estate, motor vehicle, and personal property tax bills were mailed to residents last month. So at this point, residents should have received those notices. And finally, from the Senior Center, for information on Senior Center programs, you may call the Plainville Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The first event is this Thursday, March 9, at 10:00 a.m. It's Betty White, Her Life and Times. Joe Willett, the History Guy, will present on the life of the American actress, comedian, and entertainment industry leader. The Breakfast Club will be meeting on Tuesday, March 14, at 9:00 a.m. You can enjoy an informal breakfast with a group of friends at a local Plainville restaurant. Participants will order and pay for their own meal, and you may call the Senior Center to register and to find out more details. Caregiving Connections is going to be on Tuesday, March 14, at 10:00 a.m. Individuals providing 24/7 care are invited to join the support group to discuss their experiences and their challenges. Snappy Seniors Photography on Thursday, March 16, at 10:30 a.m. Join this event, where participants will share photos of their favorite events and activities. Memory Cafe at the Senior Center on Thursday, March 16, at 2:00 p.m. Individuals experiencing changes in their memory and their caregivers are invited to join the Memory Cafe, a safe and supportive social gathering for people experiencing similar life challenges. Talk to Your Legislator on Monday, March 20, from 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. Legislators, State Senator Henry Martin and State Representative Francis Rexford Cooley will be providing a legislative update on issues related to Plainville seniors. Participants will also have an opportunity to speak to their representatives about issues affecting the district, about bill proposals, and other legislative-related items. A COVID-19 vaccine booster shot in Walkin Clinic will be open to the public on Monday, March 20, and on Monday, April 10. Any member of the public can visit the Senior Center, and they can receive their free COVID vaccine booster. This event was made possible by a grant that was funded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and awarded to the Wheeler Clinic. And finally, grandparents raising grandchildren. Tuesday, March 21, at 10:30 a.m., grandparents or relatives who are raising a grandchild, niece, or nephew are welcome to join the support group at the Senior Center, where resources, ideas, common joys, and challenges are discussed. Actually, I lied. There's one more. This is actually a really important one, too. The mammography bus is going to be on Tuesday, April 4, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They need a minimum of 10 people to register before the bus will actually come, and I believe there's only eight people registered so far. But again, this is Hartford Hospital's mobile mammography program, and they'll be offering screenings and mammograms to the Plainville senior citizens, or Plainville residents at the Senior Center. You don't have to be a senior citizen. It's really for any woman over the age of 40 who has not received a screening in the last 12 months. So Hartford Healthcare will accept all types of health insurances, and if there is no health insurance available, there is a pool of money that can help fund the cost for the screening. So anyone who is in need of a screening and hasn't had one, they should really go. Pre-registration is required, and you can call the Senior Center to register. Now, that is it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead. I just have one quick question for Andy. So the Chili Cook-Off, is that in lieu of the chicken challenge that they used to have, the chicken wing?
I don't know. Being new, I haven't heard of the chicken challenge, chicken wing challenge. I could look into that for you.
Thank you. I would appreciate that.
Yeah. Was that typically held around this time of year?
Yes, yeah, at the VFW.
At the VFW?
Yeah, wingding.
I will look into that, and I will, I'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All set. Does anybody else have anything for the Town Manager or Assistant Town Manager tonight? Thank you both for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're in Section 9, Public Comments section of our meeting. During this time, we welcome the public to come to our podium. Please state your name and address. You will be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council tonight? I see a lot of faces out there. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? One more time. Okay, I'll close the Public Comments section, and we will move along. We do not have any old business. Onto our new business items. Item number one, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled "Approval of 2022 Raise Grant Award Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Connection to New Britain, Connecticut Fast Track Trail."
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, please.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to ratify the Town Manager's submission of the Assistance to Firefighter Grant to FEMA and approved a 5% local match of $39,609.19 if awarded the grant.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Thank you for doing that. It'll be a big, fingers crossed, it'll be a big help to the town. We can get that done. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to waive the competitive procurement process and award bid 2023-21 WPCF Drive Assembly to Lakeside Equipment Corporation, Bartlett, Illinois, in the amount of $34,817.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, please.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed in the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. We are now at item 12, under Other Discussions of Interest. At this point, the Town Manager and the Superintendent of Schools are going to take turns presenting their information for the next fiscal year budget. So, Michael, are you going first? I don't know who's going first.
It's likely after the coin toss, I'm going to defer to Steve, and I'm going to defend this goal.
Okay.
And he can go first.
Great. Okay. Perfect.
Thank you, and good evening. Exciting start to the evening. It was nice to see Sergeant Arvey getting promoted and new officer. My eyes aren't as good as they used to be, so I need it in front of me and over there, too. I'll be pretty brief tonight, and I know we have a workshop scheduled for next Wednesday, so there'll be a lot of questions and answers at that point. And I know that, you know, some of the council members, Chairman Puglisi has been at, you know, some of the board workshops, and you've seen all the materials so far. So I'll go through this fairly quickly, but thank you for the opportunity to present our budget. I think we start with our budget and commitments. So throughout this process, I've been committed with my team to be thoughtful and mindful in our approach to budgeting, to request only what we believe essential to educate and support our students' needs, to continue to collaborate, communicate, innovate, remain mindful and resilient in our budgeting practices, our portrait of the graduate qualities, and in all that we do, and to do our very best for all PCS children, families, and our dedicated staff. So with that said, everything we do goes back to our vision document, inspiring, preparing, engaging students in learning, to be lifelong learners, to follow their passion, engage in their communities, and positively impact our global society. You've seen this many, many times. The belief statements are developed by the previous Strategic Planning Committee. They really guide the work that we do. We just went through a whole additional strategic planning committee with about 50 people, and we're implementing those plans as we speak. And I'll be following up with a presentation on that at the Monday board meeting. But everything we do goes back to our guiding vision. This is a new graphic that we created around our portrait of the graduate qualities, and those are the ones I just read in my budgeting commitments, about being collaborative, communicative, innovative, mindful, and resilient, and what that means for our students in grades pre-K through 12 during their time in Plainville Community Schools. And you can see our new logo over there on the left with Inspire, Prepare, Engage, and our high school statement about their portrait of the graduate. So everything we do has to align with our vision, our mission, our goals, and our strategic plan. This is our overview of the budget that you've seen already. This gives you just the outline of the numbers. This current budget that we're in, $41,308,797. The budget before health insurance cost was $42,643,840, for an increase of $1,335,043. That was a 3.23% increase. The health insurance, at the time this was adopted by Board of Education, I'll share more about that, as I know the Town Manager will as well, was, we were told to project initially 12%, then 10%. So this includes a 10% increase in health insurance, which is $627,957, for a total increase of $1.963 million, which is 4.75% of a total budget of $43,271,797. So that's an overview of our budget that was adopted by our Board of Education at the February Board of Ed meeting. I just wanted to share, and I shared this one other time, I believe it was our joint presentation with the Town Manager and myself, to the council and the board. But this is just our changing, the changing picture of Plainville and changing student population and some of the changing opportunities and challenges that we face as a school community. So when you're looking at the numbers and trying to compare apples to apples, you're dealing with a very different educational profile, if you will, and some of the challenges that come with that. So just looking at the students that are eligible for free and reduced meals, back in 2001, 2002, it was under 12%. Now we're over 41%. Non-English home language was 5.5%. Now it's 7.7%. Graduation rates have been strong and growing, which is a good thing. Special ed identification, students, you know, meeting really specialized instructional needs has gone up to 13.5%. And then our different ethnic groups, the minorities, our races and ethnicities, we've remained pretty static. With our African-American population, our Hispanic population has grown by sevenfold, just about, or sixfold, from 3.9% to 21.9%. And then, you know, our Caucasian population, white, has gone from 88% back in 2001 to 65.6%. And we also have 32 different languages are spoken in Plainville. I thought that was really interesting. Within our schools, we have students who come from countries speaking 32 different languages. So a lot of really great diversity and opportunities and learning from one another, but also some challenges with the education that we are required to provide and that we are charged with providing as our mission.
Can I ask you a quick question before? I know you have a lot to do here.
Yeah.
Regarding the free and reduced lunch percentage of students, can you explain why that has changed so dramatically?
It's based on the family's wealth. So if you make a certain, I don't have the dollars committed to memory, but depending on the size of your family and how much income you have, you fill out a form every year to qualify for either free or reduced lunch and breakfast, so free or reduced meals. During the pandemic, they opened up free meals to all, and that's been extended through the end of this year. However, in a typical year, families are required to apply if they want to be considered for free or reduced meals, and it's based on the family's income and the number of family members in the household.
So has the formula changed to make more people eligible for this, or has this got a lot of COVID built into that? I know that all students, irrespective of their, you know, whether they were in the program or not, were eligible for those free and reduced lunches, but that seems somewhat of a dramatic increase if it's based on income. And I'm not sure, you know, we have to look at some of our data in terms of the average income for families in Plainville, and that's kind of an interesting statistic for me.
It is. It is. And we see the challenges of that. You know, there's more poverty than there was back in 2001, 2002. There's more very low-income challenges for many more families. So.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And I can get you information about how the formula has changed?
I think, yeah, I mean, something dramatic change there, because our population is kind of, the overall population is fairly stable, but the category of students and their families seems to have changed significantly, which kind of makes me wonder about, you know, the overall income levels and affordability in Plainville as well.
There are challenges. Yeah, absolutely. Sam clicked his pen, so I know he's writing it down. He'll work on getting you those numbers. I think my administrative team who are here tonight, there'll be some members here on Thursday.
I see them out there.
They work very hard, and they're here to support our budget.
Okay. Well, if you could just, no hurry. I'm just curious about that information and where that comes from and what's changed to make it so dramatically different.
We'll definitely provide that for you.
Thank you.
Sure. This is an overview of our contractual increases, so I'm trying to give you, you know, the best understanding I can give you about some of the challenges within the budget. So providing for a more diverse population that has additional needs. For instance, if we have 20 or more students in a school who are from a, who speak a different language that are English learners, I should say, we have to hire someone, we have to hire a teacher to support those students for that school. So we've had that happen a few times. So with those things comes some financial challenges as well and some things that we have to include in our budget. This slide is all of our contracts, and as you know, Chairman Puglisi, you're involved in the teachers' contract negotiations, which was quite an endeavor. And we ended at about midnight on the last night and almost went to arbitration, but we were able to come to an agreement. And I'll share more on that in the next slide. But through collective bargaining, which we must engage in for all of our collective bargaining groups, there's no right to strike, but we must bargain fairly in alignment with contracts that are coming in around the state, and there's a right, as you know, to seek, you know, mediation and arbitration. But these are the numbers where they came in. The contract for teachers for next year, 3.8%. The year after that is also 3.8% and then 3.9% in the third year. It was an 11.5% contract over three years, which is a big change from the last contract, which was 8.85%. So these are factors that, you know, and you'll see where we come out across the state in the next slide. But our total contractual obligations, you know, just looking at the takeaways at the bottom, about close to 4.3%. And this does include the insurance increase at 10%, which you'll see more on that. So it's slightly less than this when you factor in a new change that we heard on that. You know, when you're looking at the average 10-year budget of less than 2%, and we're coming in with just contractual obligations of over 4%, you start, you're coming out of the gate with some initial challenges, obviously. And then just our last, you know, we have not included an inflation factor in into our budget. We've, we're aware that there will be inflation, but we have not built that in. We've, we're going to buffer that with, you know, the understanding that we still have some ESSER funding remaining that we can cover some overages if we experiences, if we experience those, which we've been doing a lot of that. So it's just, we did not build in inflation to this contract, to the budget, I should say. I'm not sure if you can even see that slide from here, but this is the information on the latest insurance rates that were released and shared with our, with the Town Finance Manager, Director of Finance, and they're showing that we were told to, you know, in the last, at the last insurance rate release, it was 8 to 10% was what they were estimating for Plainville. We're being told that it's going to be 7.1%. So that's really good news. The board has already adopted the budget, so the budget for the board is 4.75%. So there's some natural savings. Yeah, I figured you would. All right. We can handle that, right? So it's about, it amounts to $182,000 less that would be required to support the existing Board of Education budget that was approved. If it were part of the Board of Education-approved budget, it would bring it down to 4.31%. I understand that. It's too late to, you know, to include that in our budget.
Well, this has happened in the past, last year, the last budget.
Yeah.
It came in higher than we budgeted. So it does kind of fluctuate. This is a good direction for it to be going in, so.
Right. I agree.
We're happy about that.
I am, too. This is the three-year teachers' contract settlement. Of the 30 teacher contracts negotiated at the time of the settlement, the majority were equal to or higher than Plainville. All but a few were higher than 11%. The teachers' union coordinates their negotiations. They get together and they work really closely together across the state. And most are settled within a very narrow range. You have some outliers for very unusual situations that you can see when the top bar there, I know that town, it's a very unusual situation, and then the lower one, too. But they're all within a certain range. A few outside of the range are generally non-financial items. So we settled that, as I said, 11.5% in a very careful process, and I feel, I believe that it was fair and equitable and does well for our teachers' group, but also, you know, was able to get some things that we were looking to get back into our contract with an extra day of student learning, also an extra day of in-person professional learning repurposed from the old self-design days. So just some summaries on this slide. I only have 17 slides, you know. I'm trying to keep it real short tonight. It's my son's birthday. I'm going to try to see him before he goes to sleep. So in summary, we're very proud of what the Plainville school system has been able to provide for our students, guided by our vision. guided by our vision to inspire and prepare learning, lifelong learners, to follow their passion, engage in their communities, and positively impact our global society. The 2324 Board of Education approved budget sustains and improves our system while at the same time keeping costs in check to the fullest extent possible. Our overall cost increases approximate contractual cost increases, plus the cost of security personnel that we deem necessary for the security of our district that were built into this budget. We had built them into ESSER funds for the current year, but as you know, we have too many funds built into ESSER that we're trying to back out of now to avoid that fiscal cliff. So security, the security director for our district and the armed security officer at the middle school were, were built into this budget. The budget also absorbs back some increased software cost that has been COVID grant funded for the past few years. Again, we're trying to back out of that as, as the monies are moving, you know, moving closer to zero. With cost increase in mind, we reduced administrator requested budgets by $73,448 that were taken out of the operating budget. We're making sure that they have what they need, you know, backfilling with ESSER funds. For a second year in a row, we have proposed budgets without taking into account price increases for programs and consumables, holding a flat cost. In reality means that we're, we have to do more with less, but as I said, we're, we're using ESSER strategically for that. In 2324, we still have some ESSER funds to fall back on. However, we're also very concerned about the fiscal cliff. You've heard me mention about 30 times when that funding runs out and the continuity of our essential programs and services that we must, we must continue to address. Just, this is about the diligence of the board. It was a very thoughtful process, very involved process. The board members were very active in the process and we met four times, you know, many hours of board, you know, in-person deliberations, listening to my wonderful presentations and asking lots of questions. And then outside of the process, we had a Q and A document which you can access. Oh, I guess I should click your slide too, which you can access. This will all be, this will all be posted and we have a district budget website too, and you can access all of that. But there's a, that bitly budget. These are the questions and answers that, there are 14 pages of them that arose throughout the, the budgeting process with our board. So we, we addressed any question that was raised. And this just gives you some underfunded accounts that were asked about by our board members and just some details on that. I won't read through all of them, but you'll have this for your review and, you know, I'm sure we'll have discussion on that at the workshop. So the takeaway is that we believe this is an aggressive budget, that it's one that we can achieve, however. We have remaining ESSER funds, as I've mentioned a few times, as that safety net, but we must back away from that. We have about 1.1 million in staffing that's offset to ESSER funds this year. So as we're reducing staff, planning for the future, reducing our offsets to, to software and other, other uses of those funds, we're trying to be mindful of that and build slowly back into the operating budget. We are on track. This was as of the end of December. We're tracking really well to the budget. You know, Sam does a great job of monitoring all of that and working with our entire district on the financials. So, you know, we typically end up just about where we want to be. We have, in my tenure as superintendent, we haven't done a budget freeze yet, which I'm, I'm happy with. Of course, we had some odd years with COVID, so it's, it's, it's changed, but what's that? No, I don't want to start again. So we're, you know, and 15% of our budget is, is supplies and energy and things like that. The rest is all, we're a people organization for 85%. So this is just an overview of where we are currently. The next slide, and we only have a couple more. This is the funding that was returned or not utilized, so not expended from our previous three budgets. A total of two point, well, $2,3572. So that, you know, I know that has helped with the unassigned fund balance buildup, also offsetting some capital expenses, capital, capital plan expenditures by 300, almost 340,000. And also building up that turf fund, the turf field fund, which is really, it's a great town facility. And the board has done a thoughtful job of trying to build up the funding to replace that turf when it is needed. It's in really great shape and it's being well maintained, but, you know, it won't last forever. So if you don't plan ahead, you're stuck with a very large expense when the, when the turf fails. So the board's been thoughtful about using some unassigned, I shouldn't say, I mean, unexpended funds at the end of the year, making, you know, approving to move that money in those, those ways that you see there. So anyway, I guess the, the big picture is that we try to budget very carefully, in a very transparent way, and only for what we need. If there is money left over, you know, we've returned the last three years over $2 million that we didn't use. The funding for the school budget is 27% state-funded, which is going up for Plainville. And with the, a bill, 5003, that's House Bill 5003 that's proposed, it's going to elevate and escalate the, the rate of, of the, of the ECS phase-in, which is favorable to Plainville. So that would be a benefit of about $600,000 as opposed to the 10-year phase-in plan. It would be about three years sooner, so it would be fully phased in by, in 2025. So we're hoping that goes through, it'd be very beneficial. But as of now, 27% ECS funded and 73% locally funded. Oh, that was the slide. I'm clicking on my computer and not up there. My eyes can't see that far this night, so I apologize for being out of sync here. This next slide you've seen a number of times, and it's just a picture of what I just shared. The blue line is what our ECS funding has been. The red line is the, the phase-in up to 100%. We've never gotten 100% of our ECS funding that we should be getting from the state. And there was even a drop, you see that dip in the middle where they cut the ECS funding after the budgets were approved. And you remember that, of course, because we had to make reductions at the town level and at the board level. So we had to work through that together. But now we're, we're in a much better picture with, with our ECS funding that does go to the town to offset educational expenses. And next to last slide, this is just, you've seen this a number of times. The yellow there, that had just come in at the last, at the last budget workshop with the town. My, my colleague, who is the principal in Norwalk, said that their superintendent was really adamant about needing a 12.9% budget increase, which I was pretty shocked at. But all the other, you can see all the other percentages there. I just, I just, I met with my Southernton counterpart, you know, well over 7% and really struggling over there. So we have, we have neighbors who are really in a, in a much more difficult place than we are right now. So, you know, we worked very hard on this budget, I support it 100%. I appreciate the board's unanimous approval, the thorough review and the unanimous approval of, of this budget. And I look forward to answering questions from the council over the next Wednesday at the workshop and over the weeks ahead. I don't know if you have any, any quick questions now, or you just want me to sit down and let town manager present?
Anybody have any questions for the superintendent yet? We just got our budget books tonight, so we haven't, we haven't had a chance. I've, I've seen a lot of your information, but when we put it together as a total, that's what we really need to deliberate on.
Of course.
So does anybody else have any questions tonight that they have right away? No?
Yes, Mary.
Just the presentation tonight, will we get a copy of that, Steve?
Yes, yep. And I can, I think I've shared the link to the budget, the page on the budget website as well, but I'll, I'll make sure you get everything, every presentation. You get the budget books as well and all the documents, but yes, you will get tonight's.
Right, but it's a nice overview.
I can send that to you. We can send that through an email tomorrow.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
It's getting cold in here.
I'm very cold.
Are you okay?
No, I'm cold. No, I'm not.
I mean, Tom, you're trying to. Put your coat on, we're almost done.
I agree.
Thank you, Steve.
Sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Steve, you're right, it is, we're going to have to use bigger font when you stand back over here. But I have the, the written copy here. All right, so again, the, the high-level overview of 30,000-foot kind of view of the budget challenges, for sure, challenging. This is a heavy lift, in my opinion. I thought, I thought, you know, optimistically that, you know, coming in as the new town manager, I'd have, I have a opportunity here to, to really kind of drill into presenting and delivering, you know, a really good, solid budget than I am, but I was hoping for better results at this point. But there are three major things that, that really I've got to talk about, and that is inflation. There are really, you know, some economic headwinds that we just cannot escape. And those are coming home to roost with respect to the cost of doing business. Just things we just cannot escape. State budget approval, it's one of those processes that happens after the fact. So as the superintendent alluded to, the ECS, any, any movement on ECS, we just, we just won't know. So, you know, the, the capital budget and then state revenue is, you know, may or may not help us. We, we just don't know. We do the best we can and we, we look at the forecasts and the projections and we try to, you know, put the, the best number as we know it from CCM and all of the other sources that we have at the state level, trying to figure out what might be coming our way. And, and they do, CCM does a great analysis for us and we, we do the best we can. But again, it's a, it's a placeholder of the number and we, we just have to wait and see. And the other is, is three in terms of the hiring. I put employees, retention, but it's really, it's, it's personnel, it's salaries, as you saw on the Board of Ed side, 85%. And any, any, any budgets predominantly going to be driven by the personnel costs. And, you know, municipal side, we're a lot smaller, but we still facing, you know, the recruitment and the labor market is very competitive and very difficult. So in order to attract talented people, we are often faced with, you know, increases there that are unbudgeted. So, you know, I mentioned earlier in, in the meeting with, with Sarah coming on board, myself, Andy, you know, a lot of new faces since July 1st. So, you know, we've got to incorporate those increases in there. And contractually, we've got a lot of work to do in terms of facing those increases. But sort of that sets the table for, for the numbers ahead. And so, you know, hang on to your hat and buckle up for this ride. We're looking at $68,782,808. It's a $3 million increase and roughly 4.2, 4.72%, which is, you know, that's, that's, that's sort of what the state average, no, I wouldn't say the state average, but a lot of, lot of towns that we've seen coming in at these levels. And obviously, the personnel costs, contracts, health insurance, a number of other things that are, that are driving that. So move ahead, hope you can see that. But as recommended, this proposed budget would increase the tax rate by 1.72 mils or 5.61%. And it's, you know, it's, it's tough to put those numbers up there when you look at the last three years and what this council and town has been able to achieve in the last three years. 2021 was zero, 2022 was a rollback of .06. And then this current fiscal year after revale, rollback of 3.92. So again, it's kind of shocking out of the gate, but there are a number of things that we can't control and a number of obligations that we have to meet in order to continue the level of services that this community is accustomed to receiving. So I would point to the bottom there, if you can read it, the six-year average of minus 23 mils or negative 5.5%. Like to probably dive a little bit deeper to see what our 10-year average is. But again, it kind of points to, it does point to the fiscal responsibility, the, the fiscal stewardship of the council and the history of this town has had in the track record. So I understand, you know, trying to do the most you can or more with, with less and doing the best you can. We go forward on the expenditure side. Again, this is, when I look at it, I look at it in totality of terms of the Board of Education with the town general government. So Board of Ed is 4.75, this is superintendent indicated. On the town government side, we're over $1 million and 5.35% increase. Capital projects, 75,000, excuse me, a rather large increase there from a percentage standpoint, but it really is that capital has historically been funded anemically at 7,000. I'm making a recommendation here that we begin to move in the direction of actually funding capital in the capital projects line item. So I've recommended a, a small, well, not such a small, but a small move increase in, in funding those projects. Debt service is zero, it's, it's the same. We keep a level debt service at 4.4 million, so that is unchanged. Again, the division between the Board of Ed at 43 million or 62%, 62.9%. The general government, town government at 30%. Debt service at 6.4% and our capital at 0.11%. Expenditures in the last 12 years, as you can see the chart again, 3.51% last year and for 2024, 4.72. Average increase over the 12 years of 2.33%. Again, historical data here, looking at the effort to keep this budget increase in a, in a very tight range. And unfortunately, we're starting to break out of that range. Inflation, again, looking at the numbers that we faced in the last couple of years, 2018 through 2023, 24 proposed. Last year, 7%, this year, 6.4%. So our expenditure is running under inflation and the previous six-year average was 2.68. So again, just kind of an indicator of the economic headwinds that we face with respect to doing business. Our general government, town government summary by function, our general government increase, 129,489%. Public safety, 246,727, 4.43%. Public works, 116,867, 2.57%. Health and human services, 95,910, 5.01%. Civic and cultural, 7,267, 3.9%. Employee fringe benefits, $471,070, 10, almost 11% increase. And then our, our transfers out staying unchanged. So that's our, our 1,067,438 or our 535 is broken down by function of those categories. Major drivers, payroll, 293. Police retirement, 273 in terms of their pension plan, major increase this year. Health insurance, as the superintendent alluded to, a little bit better than expected, but still in those top three categories, the top three alone, 772,000, just in the top three. Board of Ed, as the superintendent said, 187,000. Robin, on our side, I think it was close to 50? I'm sorry, 67. So we'll, we can make those adjustments or the council will make that we have on our side and you'll make the adjustment. We've incorporated that because we have, obviously, it's still going through the process, but you'll have the 180,000 on the Board of Ed side. But still, big numbers either way you talk about. I mean, you know, gone are the days of 3%, 4% increases on, on health insurance where we were, again, notified at earlier on at 12% and that came down. You know, they were talking 12% at one point, but down to 7%, but still significant numbers to deal with. Grand list comparison, this is one of the bright spots as our assessor came forward tonight to talk about. And as I reported, under my town manager's report, that the healthy grand list growth helps close the gap, but does not do it entirely. So this year's 2.19% increase translates to just over a million, 1.1 million in terms of estimated new tax revenue, which is, which is great. And as you see historically, sort of setting aside last year's rev-. And as you see historically, sort of setting aside last year's revale year, that if you look in the bottom of the chart table, 2018, 267,000 in terms of revenue growth, 542 for 2019, 586 for 2020, then the revale year and of course, and then jumping, almost doubling the half million to almost 1.1 million. So good growth, great growth. Anytime you have over 2% grand list growth, that's fantastic and it's helpful. But again, it's a bright spot, but doesn't close the gap for us. Another tool in the, in the budgeting toolkit, use of fund balance, interesting chart here as well. Historically, going back to 2015, 2016, 200,000, excuse me, all the way up to present current fiscal year, use of 1.4 million in fund balance. Going forward, again, like capital, I'm presenting or recommending a rollback of that allocation to 600,000 is what I'm recommending, going back to 2022's recommendation in terms of trying to fill that hole, if you will, because it's a hole that gets baked into the budget and it's rather aggressive in my opinion at 1.4. But I understand, you know, that times that has to be used and it's there as a tool to be used, but we do risk the fact that we could lower that below any type of policy rating where we like, I believe the town has 12 to 14% range and we wouldn't want to jeopardize our rating with the bond agencies should that dip below that 12% level. So it's just a cautionary tale and it's a recommendation that we try, if we can, if at all possible, to try and roll back that number to previous levels, 600,000. So that reflects, the next slide, as we go through some of the estimated direct revenues, the grand lists obviously helping out. Fines and fees relatively the same, license and permits and other revenues declining intergovernmental. And of course, the transfers out with use of fund balance of 600,000 of the 1.4, pretty much leaving $800,000 gap there for a total of 201,925. Again, it's just a look at what we can do, should do, and how these revenues stack up. Our debt service, another component. We have 23 million on the books, give or take, with 11 million on the government side, Board of Education, 12 million. So as I mentioned, 4.4 million is budgeted for debt service consistently. The town government uses 1.5, Board of Education 1.8, effectively available, leaving us a usable balance of 1,49,712, of which I've followed previous recommendations and using some of that for CIP. But this year, using just 500,000 and effectively leaving a net there of 549,712, should the council need to use that in terms of capital. Again, just looking at different, different look at how we fund and what we fund, but still some wiggle room depending on where we get through the budget process and the budget deliberations. In the capital, we have 1,954,625. That's a reduction of about 307,000 from last year's figure of 2.2 million in capital. So I'm suggesting there in the general fund, 75,000, as I mentioned, use of a balance of CIP of 225, the debt management of 500, unassigned fund balance of 574, state grants of 579 to make that work at 1,954,625. So it is slight capital improvement plan diet of just, just over 300,000. I think going forward, though, I think, you know, in my opinion, you know, the 2 million is probably a decent number, a good, solid number to hit for a target. There are certainly a number of items that the town needs to and wants to get done. So I think a 2 million target is fair. So the CIP breaks down further, we're looking at Norton Park Tennis Courts, 329,000. Sidewalk repair and replacement, obviously, I think it's pretty popular in terms of residents and doing those sidewalk repair and replacements where we can, when we can. Chromebooks are in there for the Board of Ed. Recreation building roof is in there. Police building improvements. Police goose-down radio system. Interesting point here that we've actually, that number is a much larger, is 170,000. And talking with Rob, feeling that the, it's no longer really a capital item and what we've done in the budget, you'll see as we go through deliberations, we've moved half of that, 85,000 into the operation, operation budget of the police department budget where it belongs, but didn't want to make the full 170,000 dollar move in one year. So in theory, we'd be making, making that move over two fiscal years. But again, council could say not something we want to absorb in the police budget and move it back to capital. And I guess we could carry that on, but if you really look at it, it's not as a capital item, it's more of a maintenance item at this point. So just one of those things that pop up during the review and analysis when we look at the numbers, we look at these, these projects. Moving on to other items, laptops, we have the assessor's evaluation software as well. And then there are, of course, 30 other projects that make up the balance of that 1.9 million. So trying to do quite a lot and try to maximize and leverage grant and state funds as much as we can for those capital items. So coming to an end here, the budget summary, the proposed additional expenditures of 3 million, estimated revenue of 200,000 net. We've got to look at funding, you know, 2.8 million in terms of tax dollars and that's a, that's a big hurdle. The 1.7 I recognize is a, is a large number. It's a starting point. I know that, that's, that's not going to stand. I understand that. We're going to go lower. That's just the nature and the history of this community. So it's a, it's a starting point. It's where we're at and I will open up to, to questions and also just promote our public hearing, which will take place this week on March 9th at 7:00 PM right here in the chambers. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michael. Does anybody have any questions for Michael and the town side of the budget presentation Bigger numbers every year. Okay. If there are no questions, you know, thank you for your presentation. Thank you to the superintendent of schools, Steve, for yours as well. And we'll get back together again on Thursday to have the public hearing. So, great. Thank you very much. Moving on the agenda, we don't, we do not have an executive session tonight, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned.